Want to take your hat off, sir? Thank you.
Mr. Cooper's meeting with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the law that governs this country, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
So firstly, on the agenda for today is the sewer rates resolution. Is there any public comments about the sewer rates? Any comments from the board on sewer rates? Barring any public comments, I can motion to accept these sewer rates.
Close the hearing.
Oh, close the hearing, correct. Close the hearing on the sewer rates?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have a motion to accept these sewer rates.
So move. Second.
Trustee Arno?
Aye.
Trustee Dale?
Aye.
Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Mayor votes aye. Any comments from the public for the open session?
Are we allowed to speak? Okay, so what my issue is, is I'm here from Chapman Street regarding the burned building, forty-three, forty-five, and all of our, all of the neighbors, we have concerns because that place is a mess. The vehicles, there are junk, it's a literal junkyard over there. There's abandoned vehicles, there's abandoned lawn tractors, there's so many leaves that if somebody went by and threw a cigarette, we'd have another fire. And our property values are all going down the toilet because that mess isn't getting cleaned up. I mean, I'd like to know what, when, and if anything, is gonna be done about it.
Mr. Mayor, do you mind if I respond to that?
Yeah.
I'm John Cooper, I'm the code officer.
Hi, John. You're spoken case lawyer.
They're doing the investigation, but it's still under investigation by the fire authority. Okay. The insurance company hasn't been contacted. We had them put a fence all the way around it to protect the public. Awaiting the results of the investigation, we'll move forward. The gentleman in question, as Dave Evercamp, has assured us that his insurance company's gonna take it. They haven't advised us of what's going on yet, but that's where we're at. We can't speed that process up. He has to get some kind of a settlement from his insurance company, and obviously, it can't be touched until he does that. And that's where we're at.
So the abandoned vehicles and all that whole mess, that had nothing to do with the fire, all stayed there?
That's all gonna go at the same time, so.
Okay.
Okay. But he's out in Tennessee or somewhere, we finally got a hold of him, and he contacted the insurance company. They, you know, we got with him, and they were gonna do, we tried to board it up, which was impossible, so we had to close it in the best we could. You're gonna have to be a bit patient with us for this, on this one. And that's about all we can do. That's the only thing I can report on until I hear something with the fire investigators and the insurance company.
So we have no idea whether we're looking at weeks, months?
Well, they, you know, investigations take time, they gotta come to conclusion whether it was, you know, let me see, to be gentle about that, we don't know the cause of the fire yet. Okay? But I'll try to keep everybody posted. I'll do the best I can.
Yeah, 'cause those of us living near, we all know it was a hoarding situation.
Oh, we've been chasing this guy for years. And the stuff that's on the property, apparently, doesn't belong to him, it's a, it's a family thing. It's gonna be a little bit tough, but I'll try to do the best I can as quickly as I can.
Okay, 'cause according to the, to the village zoning, I mean, that place is actually classified as a junkyard. There's five or more junk vehicles there.
Well, I've only been on this deal for two years, and they've been sending me letters for about five years, so. But, you know, even right now, as you well know, the courts aren't open, it'll take, I mean, if you wrote somebody up, it'd take two years to get to court. But as I said, I'll try to keep everybody posted, do the best I can. When I hear something, I'll get with the mayor and the board members, and they'll put out a letter or do something.
Excuse me, ma'am. Could I have your name for the minutes?
Certainly, it's Casey Boyer.
Thank you.
Can I ask you one question, John? Is, because you're looking at two different issues there, you're looking at the fire and the abandoned vehicles?
Yes.
Can that be addressed in two different areas? Or we can extract out the vehicles?
Apparently, the way we're, I'm sure you heard the same thing. A gentleman, David, owns the building. It really belonged to, it was his wife's brother or something, or it was at State Hall. I'm not really sure about this, I'm just shooting in the air on this, but it's, until insurance companies make some kind of a sale that we can get stuff out of there, but as soon as I hear something, I'll certainly advise the board, especially Dave, who's my man, but I tell you what, it's a, it's a mess.
So you are in contact with the owner of the building?
Yes, I am.
Okay, that's good.
And as soon as we find out any information, we will put it on the minutes, or we'll put it on the website, whatever we can do to inform the public.
We can hold a special meeting either.
Go ahead, Bob.
I have a question. Was that, were you on the site with the fire department when that happened, you know, that night?
Yes.
You were there all the time? In other words, now did the, did you, when the fire department left, okay, the chief can stay on there, okay? Now, let's go what I'm telling you. The chief can stay on that property as, and as long as, in other words, if you say to the chief, once the fire trucks are gone and all, I wanna stay here, and I wanna make an evaluation of this. I wanna write it up to find out whether, I wanna go around to best of my ability, find out whether it's dangerous or unsafe, or what it is. You have to have a basis.
Why do you think there's a fence all the way around it?
That's gonna stop anybody?
It has nothing to do with the fence. I, I forget the fence. The fence can go up there anytime. I'm asking you why you were not on that property at that time and wrote that up. Regardless of what you wrote, it probably wouldn't move anything, but it would be, it would, it would increase, decrease the time that this, that place can be cleaned up. Right now, the way you're letting it set, you're letting them take care of it, and that's not the right way. I was code enforcement officer, as you know, don't tell me, for almost four years. I, and you know how many dumb places that I took down in this village? And I'm not bragging, I'm just telling the facts. I know the laws, okay? That wasn't done correctly, and now we're gonna be in doo-doo for a hell of a long time.
Oh, we have to wait until the fire investigators get done.
I'm gonna, we have to wait until the fire investigation is done and the insurance settles.
But, but you, you could've done your job before that. That's what I'm trying to tell you, and it wasn't done before. So now with the fire investigation and all, yeah, they're gonna drag it naturally. They're gonna drag that for two years. Do you know, when you, when you go by Sharon Niner Works and you come down into Champlain, okay, there's a, there's a fence around that building, right at the very, you know where I'm talking about, over the bridge? Anybody here that lives in Dale, do you know where I'm talking about?
Downtown Champlain?
Yes.
Yeah, not, in Champlain.
Yeah.
Okay. You know why that building is still there? They put a fence around it. And not, and the code said, as long as that fence is there, that's, that's secure and safe. If that falls down, and he hurt somebody or something, then he's gonna get sued. But that building has been there for what, ten years? Or more?
More.
And you, you and I know that. I lived here all my life, I'm not thirty-five years old. You know, I'm forty years old, so, okay? In case you're wondering.
I'm gonna ask you a question. Who do you think is gonna pay to take this building down?
Who's gonna pay to take the building down?
Yes.
I don't give a damn who's, who's gonna pay for it.
How much can the taxpayers or the builders of Ross's Point afford?
The taxpayers don't do that. He, he's gonna, he has insurance, and there's a lawyer, we'll talk to him about that also. He has insurance.
Wait till the insurance company makes a decision before we dare to do anything.
Right now.
If we dump the gun.
Right now, we're not worrying about who's gonna pay for it, who's gonna, whatever's gonna pay for it. He's, he's, he must have insurance. If he doesn't, he's up to boot too. And that's, is that Tom Renee?
It is Tom Renee.
Okay, Tom, I didn't recognize you, it's Mike or Bob.
I'm the one kissing my meat, oh yes, sir. Roll a king kung knee to these masks, right?
Yeah, been a long time since I've seen you. But anyway, we were just discussing this, this place that burnt.
On Chapman Street.
In Ross's Point. I don't know if you knew about it or whatnot, you know?
We had a fire last, last week, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday morning, and there was a duplex, and it completely burnt, and there were some issues of, to get to do it, you know, with.
Issues of?
Vehicles in the way, probably, you know, a lot of material that was around it. We got called at four nineteen in the morning. We had fire crews there within seven minutes putting water on that fire. But now, it's, it's a completely, it looks like it's completely destroyed. And these are all the neighbors that came to the meeting and voicing their concerns on what's gonna happen. Okay. I mean, what they're.
How quick it's gonna be resolved?
Right.
Torn down and cleaned up?
Well, I mean, if I, number one, if I can get some details about the property, I'm happy to send the landowner a letter on behalf of the village and say, we need to get some answers about what's going on with us. We need to, you know, hopefully get some kind of remediation, and it works quickly. If not, as some of you remember, we have, you know, an unsafe building law in the town, and it requires us to get an engineer's report on it. We've done that on a few buildings over the years. And that would essentially be the next step, but I'm more than happy to write a letter to that landowner within the next day and say, what's going on?
Do we, do we hope he has insurance?
The, the guy who has been here, he's contacted the insurance company. They, they came to me, and I wanted to board it up. They sent some people up, and it wasn't able to board it up. We had a fence that covered the entire area, until the fire investigators get done, and the insurance company makes the decision to move on, that's where we're at.
Okay, yeah, so, okay, so.
So it looks like we can, once the insurance determines what the cause of the fire was and whatever else, I mean, it sounds like we can, we can get an engineer in and say it's unsafe, and then we can force him to take the building down.
Under seventy-two dash fourteen, I've got it loaded up here. In the event of refusal or neglect of the owner of the premise to choose a survey within twenty days from the date, he's already treated as a surveyor, they've already looked at it, and they've decided it wasn't, it wasn't a, he couldn't go in there and board the windows, so they put the fence around it. So he does have the surveyor, and it's not a case of refusal or, so he's cooperating with us.
Yeah, but if it's, if it's currently being investigated, we really can't do too much until that's completed and worked.
But the one thing he can do, he can go around, and he can pick up all that stuff that's all over the yard and whatnot, even though it's in the fence. At least pick up all of that trash and stuff that you've thrown out, the stuff that's hanging out the windows, just in case some kid does go into that fence. You can't stop kids, there's no locks on, no, no, it's a fence, but it's a fence that you can just walk in, you know? So, it, it can be a dangerous situation, and, and the village of Ross's Point can end up getting sued on it. Am I right or wrong, Tom?
Well, I mean.
Think about it, who, who is in charge of seeing, making sure that that's safe and secure? Right?
Well, no.
It's not his job.
Well, first and foremost, it probably is his job. I mean, I mean, I'm assuming he doesn't want to get sued, 'cause if somebody does go in there, the first person they're gonna sue is gonna be him, before they probably come looking at the village, number one. So, it would behoove him to at least try to pick it up and keep it as safe as possible, because if somebody does get hurt on the property, he's the first person that's gonna get sued. You know? I mean, I think as long as we're doing our due diligence in what we have to do, you know, I mean, anybody can sue anybody, it's not, you know, us ourselves, but, I mean, he's the first person that's gonna get sued if somebody gets hurt on that property.
Tom, I have another question to ask you. In Champlain, there's a, there's a building that burnt, probably fifteen, twenty years ago. There was a fence that burned a foot around it. That building is still standing, and nobody can touch it, why?
In the village of Champlain?
The village of Champlain.
If it's the Patterson Building?
No, it's right on, you know where I'm talking about, right over the bridge.
The old store?
Yeah. You'll go, you'll go by Sharon Niner Works, you come down, and just before you go on to, what is it, nine or nine B there, it's right at the corner, right there on the right.
I don't know. I know there's a property owned by someone named Trong Lee, that right now, we're in the process of trying to get that demolished. That's in the works right now, I have actually a complaint coming in the courts on that in Champlain. I'm not so sure about what that property is, Bob. I can tell you about Patterson, 'cause we've been around and around Patterson for years on that. That wasn't a fire damage building, that's a building that's in terrible shape, but unfortunately, it's also loaded with asbestos and everything, so if the village goes in there and starts doing that stuff, that's gonna cost them a ton of money. But I, I don't know about that property, I'd have to find out.
Yeah, yeah. Well, sometime if you go up by the, in fact, when you go back today, tonight, if you watch for just a little ride of daylight, when you get right down to the, right down over the bridge, it's right there, right on the corner, you can't miss it. You have, when you have to stop at a stop sign, just look to your right.
That's no concern to us, though.
No, no, but at least give.
But I don't know the incident, that's in the.
No, no, but at least give them an idea what's, what's happening anyways, right here.
And we're not gonna let that happen.
But my concern right now is, is to get, at least get the yard picked up, get, get the stuff that's up on top of the building or hanging off there, get that cleaned up, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but.
At least make it not only presentable, but make it safety, so some halfway safety if somebody goes on there.
I understand. One other thing we have to be concerned about is, is like, if there is an active fire investigation taking place on that property.
That's all done.
You have to be careful what you do.
I, I talked to the, I talked to the New York State troopers and all, and they ran the dogs in there and everything, and I said to them, I said, what are you gonna do? He says, we're outta here.
Well, it's the troopers, I'm talking about fire investigators.
Well, well, they were, they were, it sent New York State Fire, Fire Investigators on them, and it sent New York State Troopers on the back. I don't know, I can't tell you. I just know that the one was on the front, and the other thing was on the back. But I'm not.
Again, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I heard a couple things just now, that there was still an active investigation scene, if it is, that we can't really get involved in that, if there is one, but I don't know, so. We can certainly check into it, and I'm, again, more than happy to send a letter to the property owner and say, you know, we're monitoring the situation, you need to keep us advised of what you're doing.
Apparently, you live out of state?
Okay.
Tennessee? So, I mean.
The thing of it is, you know.
Doesn't mean he's those an obligation to try to.
Right. He was just up there with his insurance company, to be the name of the building. He's agreed with the decision from someone to move on.
The one thing you wanna worry about too is, let's face it, I mean, I'm there, if somebody says, let's, let's make a lawsuit against this, against the village, because they're not, they're not pushing them a little bit on this, or cleaning this up, they're gonna be in doo-doo again. Why do you want that? You know, isn't it easier for the code enforcement officer to talk to him? I know the guy, I could talk to him. He's a, he's a very religious guy, he's, you know.
It sounds like, it sounds like, you know, he's doing that.
Yeah, but we've been doing that, he's not refusing. There's a hair in the back of my.
If you want, I, I'm not gonna do it on my own.
I live west of the house, on the west side, and, you know, it, it's been an eyesore there for years. With cars parked there, all the buildings are filled up, and it's, it's just been a hazard. Has there been any code violations written up on this place before?
Right.
I, I don't know.
I mean, it's something. Who's the code enforcement officer here? Has there been any codes written up on that house before?
The files that fit.
Okay. So yes, there are.
Five years, ten years. It's a junkyard.
Something has to be done, I mean, it's not for me to throw, you know?
Is there any way we could at least get the leaves picked up? Because if someone drove by and threw a cigarette out, we have another fire. There's leaves everywhere, right in between Calvin's property and the driveway, and after my house almost burning down, I'm nervous about it. There's a, there's a stack of leaves, the whole yard is leaves, but especially like in the front, where if someone threw a cigarette out a window, then we're gonna have another fire.
There, there is a code on property maintenance also. I don't know, the code enforcement officers looked at that or not?
There's a thick file on it, someone's looked at it before, so.
Over the last five years, I got it there in my desk. Look, you have absentee landlord, which we have, you and I assess as a forward debt, we have absentee landlords, you can't get a hold of them, you can't do anything with them, you can write all the tickets you want.
It's hard to get to court.
They have time limits.
I don't feel that those residents should be responsible, but maybe it's on somebody's sub property.
If you're writing a ticket, in that, in that ticket, the court say that you're gonna go there that night or that evening or whatever, you better, they will be there, 'cause if you're not.
Well, the problem is, if he's not a state landlord, whether you send him a ticket, you send him a letter, if he doesn't show up in court, the local town justice is not gonna issue a, like a bench warrant for some guy in Tennessee, 'cause all that, what that requires then is, is state troopers or somebody to go down to Tennessee and pick the guy up, and that's just not gonna happen.
Well, the thing of it is, he lives two streets over, he's right, I bet he's right there right now.
He doesn't own the property, Bob.
No, but he's there.
That's her, that's her brother that used to own it, her.
Yeah. There's only any there.
The woman that lived there.
He's there, and you're talking about the person, you're not talking about the property now.
Listen, Bob.
You're talking about, right?
The woman that lived there, her son owns the house, and he's out in Mississippi or whatever, Tennessee, whatever.
I know that, I know.
The guy that lives on State Street, that's her brother.
That's right, I know that.
So.
He doesn't own it.
He doesn't own it.
Yes.
So you can't condemn him. I know, he's got a lot of the stuff there and stuff like that.
You can only enforce it against the owner.
I, I realize that too, but you, you, how about somebody that's taking care of something for the owner?
Not only against the owner.
You, you can only prosecute the owner, you can't prosecute, if there's violations at a property, you can't go after like the tenant, you have to go after the owner of the property.
So in other words, what you're gonna have to do is go to Tennessee or where the hell the guys living, in order to get them, is that what you're saying?
Try to convince them he needs to do something about it, is what we try to do.
But now, now, you, you, I, you, you can't do something about all the stuff that's on the ground and all, through the.
And even property maintenance.
Through the healthy, through the healthy environment. That, that stuff itself is happening right now.
My, my, my personal opinion, and Mr. Cooper can certainly call the health department, the health department's gonna defer to him. They're not gonna, they're not gonna come, they've got their own problems, they don't have the manpower to come up there and look at a piece of property that's, that's health violations.
I agree, I agree with you that, because even with the pigeons at the old Holland Hotel, they, they didn't wanna come up.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. They're supposed to, but they don't come up.
They don't.
They don't come up.
I understand what Mr. Cooper's saying about he doesn't want village residents to have to pay, but what about those of us who've been paying village taxes for years and years and years, and our property values are gonna be down the toilet because we live next to that mess? My husband and I would like to buy a bigger house, but we can't sell ours, 'cause we won't get anything near what it's worth living next to that mess. And we paid taxes for over twenty years. How is that fair to us?
In fact, your house was very young because of that, yeah.
Yes, it did.
Five, my name is Mark, we're on forty-one Chapman Street, my wife. Five minutes more in that house, my house would burn, and then, five minutes. It's a mess next door. It really is.
If our dog went to woke us up, we would've, we could've burnt. He was out there with a garden hose trying to save our house, because I've been complaining since June of the prior year about that mess.
Which is on fire.
The only thing of it is, what I'm trying to, trying to handle is, I ain't letting you see all of these people, including myself, I'll go with them. To hire lawyers, then it really gonna cost the village some money, and I don't wanna do that, 'cause I've been paying taxes here for sixty years. And I don't wanna do that.
It's, we have to wait for the investigations to finish.
I have a question. Back to, it sounds like there's, there's more than one issue here. You're looking at the fire, you're talking about property maintenance and, and the, and the junk vehicles. So maybe we can address the property maintenance? Maybe you can get a hold of this guy and say, hey, can you hire somebody to pick up the leaves, because they're concerned about the, the neighbors?
Pick up the debris around.
Pick up, especially the leaves.
That, that.
That, that night of the fire, I had raised the leaves up to my property line. The night of the fire, the leaves burnt right up to my property line, within four feet of my house.
Yeah, they were burning, let me tell you.
And, and, and the backyard right now, there's at least two to three inches of leaves throughout the whole property, and that's been there since last fall. He doesn't, he doesn't do anything with the property, he just leaves it alone. Some, we just don't want this to fall through the cracks at some point.
No, definitely.
No?
We don't either.
Yeah, it's not going.
It's not going to.
We just have to wait for the, the investigation to finish, the insurance, insurance to figure out what they're gonna do for their settlement, and we can't really rush that along, 'cause if we don't, if we, if we interrupt the investigation, then that could also come back on us.
Listen, I, I get that. It's gonna take some time to conduct that investigation, because that night, they determined it possibly was arson, because of different origins of the fire on the different location, I get that. It's gonna take some time. We just, we just want you guys to be aware of our concerns with property.
Now, and, again, what I would propose to do is at least I could write to the property owner and say, listen, you know, we're concerned about issues that exist at the property, whether it's your own vehicle, property maintenance, the fire damage, whatever, we need to get some things resolved at the property, managed standards and investigation's still ongoing, but some of these other issues, we think could probably still be, can be addressed in the interim, and we'd like them to get addressed. And somebody has to say?
I think if we've seen a little bit of progress, I think everybody's fine with it at ease.
Right, that's right. I mean, again, this fire happened, when did this fire happen?
Last Wednesday. Last Wednesday, yeah, last Wednesday.
Yeah, it hasn't even been a week yet.
So it's not been a week yet. So I mean, unfortunately, I mean, we like, hopefully, I think it resolves as soon as possible, but sometimes it takes a little bit. Let's see, I just, I'm checking.
Forty-five. Two weeks.
It's been going on two weeks, it'll be two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah.
Two weeks, one.
Sorry, it's two weeks, yeah.
Two weeks, one.
He's been tired, you know.
As soon as I get a, a release from them, I got the guys, phoned them in, I'll have As soon as I get a, a release from them, uh, I got the guys phoned them in, I'll have them con- and then I contacted, they contacted the insurance company, and they came right up and they canceled it. So they're on, they're on the, on the right page, but as soon as we get a release from the people that are investigating, we can go back to the insurance company and tell them we want it cleaned up.
Okay.
That's what we'll do.
If, if you could send me some of their contact information, they have, they have to send to me tomorrow, and let me take a look at it and see what I can do.
Because we do have problems with absentee landlords, but this guy has been in contact with us, and has been timely on getting.
Yeah, he flew up to people's insurance company, they came up with that.
Yeah, that, that's real fast for something to fly out, so.
It's only been a week.
John, I have one other question. Did you write them up, right on the spot, that it's dangerous and unsafe?
Write them up for what?
Should've wrote them up, that building was dangerous and dangerous, so you don't care who owns it. It's, it's the person that's in that building that, that takes care of that building is the one responsible at that time, at that fire.
There's nobody taking care of the building to begin with.
He was taking care of that building, he was putting junk in that building, don't tell me he wasn't taking care of it.
Again, again, we can only deal with, we can only deal with the owner of the building, we can't deal with other people, right, we gotta deal with the owner of the building.
Well, okay, what you're saying is.
It's not the owner of that pile.
Theoretically, he, he's a tenant.
Yeah, well, the owner's responsible, the owner is, is the person, the landowner is the person, I mean, I mean, if tenants are doing something illegal to the property, that's, you know, criminal, state police issues too, but, but we can only enforce, and we can only enforce violations against the owner of the property.
Boy, sure a mess, I'll tell you that.
I agree with you there.
So in other words, what you're saying is, Tom, that could be there for a long, long, long time.
Well, I don't, I, I don't know.
All the buildings on that property are also filled with junk. I, I don't mean good stuff, I mean paper and bottles and whatever he had.
Well, the cars are.
Everything's just stuffed in that garage, stuffed in the bag buildings, you know, who put it there? Not the owner.
Well, again, again, if it's junk, the owner's the one responsible, he's the one that'd be responsible to clean it up, he'd be responsible for the ones that they find, he'd be responsible to take whatever action needs to be taken to come into compliance.
Now, do you ever, do you ever go after code violations and property maintenance? Because this, this place hasn't been maintained in years, many years.
We have, we have in the past.
They have read this.
What about this one?
My neighbor wrote this up seven, eight years ago.
There's been complaints against them.
The guy said, like, I'm gonna, because Jed and I had a big discussion about this one. Absentee landlords, how do you handle it?
Yeah, it's not easy.
There's one apartment building I thought was abandoned until I saw lights on, it's like, oh, there's people living in there.
He wasn't living in there.
I wasn't, I was talking about a different building.
No.
Living in Tennessee, I don't think.
He couldn't get in that building, never might live in it.
Once, once the fire investigation is done, is it possible for the village to clean it and add the bill on to his tax, on to his taxes?
It, it is, um, I mean, some of you don't remember that, but when the whole Holland Hotel situation went down, that's one of the things that the village did to, to clean that up, and there've been a couple of the buildings, there was a building right, right down here on.
Montgomery.
On Lake, uh, Lake Street. Um, and there's been a couple of other ones that, over the years, we've, um, indeed, we dangerous buildings, there's a, in our ordinance, there's a, um, dangerous buildings section, and there's very specific steps that we have to take to have a building found dangerous, and we have to get an engineer, we have to hire an engineer to go in and review it, give us a report, I mean, it's a, it's a process. And ultimately, if, if the applicant decides not to do anything, the village can take steps to, to basically demolish the building and add the cost for, whatever the costs are, to the taxes on the property. That's, and that, that was done specifically in the Holland.
About years ago, the county used to take and pay, pay for it, and then they reimbursed the village and stuff like that, but they don't do that anymore.
Correct, they did that at the time for Holland, which is one, been one of the issues of the problems with the Patterson Building and, and the village of Champlain, because that, that building is flooded with asbestos, and you've got a couple of asbestos over the years, as what it would cost to take that building down, which you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, which would then really just fall into the hands of the village, having to eat, eat that because the county's not gonna reimburse them. I mean, we already know the county wouldn't reimburse the village for that. And that owner of that building was a candidate, and he's not coming down to do it.
Oh, I have another question. When I was a enforcement officer, I took, I have, I wish I'd have taken all the information with me, I didn't have it at home. I took out, took down fourteen buildings. I'm the one that declared them, and you, I, I believe you were the, you were, you were the, the representative for the village of Ross's Point. I took down fourteen of them, okay? I'm the one, and Bobby Clark, we took the two of us, I could, I could get anybody I want with me as long as it was connected with the village. And Bobby and I, we wrote them up, I deemed them dangerous and unsafe. Their lawyers came, how many lawyers came, and sat right in here, in, in the board, and argued against this, and they lost, how many?
A whole few.
There was about, there was about six of them that lost, out of the fourteen buildings, and that's not including the trailer parks that I, that I got rid of. And I'm not bragging, I'm just telling you, if I did it then, there's no reason why the laws are, I don't believe the laws are changed anymore. I don't believe they're changed a bit, so that's derelict of duties, and somebody's, somebody's not doing their duties.
The key thing is.
Bob, the fire happened two weeks ago, we're in the midst of an investigation of the property, we want, we're gonna look into it, we're gonna take action on it, we're gonna do what we have to do to, to protect everybody. But, but things don't happen overnight either, as you know.
No, but somebody should've been on that property, if, when, if, when the, when the, uh, fire department was there, because the fire department owns that, as long as we're on there, nobody else goes in. The only person that can go in is the owner, and if he wasn't the owner, he can't, he couldn't go in, okay? But the code enforcement officer could be there, he could walk around, if he, he can look around and find all of, all of the discrepancies he wants, if he finds enough discrepancies, that is legal. I don't care, anybody tells me. Don't forget, I was brought up in a family with, with, with you know who, my father, okay? I mean, let's face it, I knew a lot of laws, that's the only reason I took the damn job. Because I would've, I could've if I wanted to take, get the, the, whatever information I wanted, you know what I mean? You know, we had enough back, and I'm not bragging, I'm just telling you the facts. And there's no reason that those facts still do not exist right now. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. So, as far as I'm concerned, the village of Ross's Point is in derelict of what, what's happening there. And technically, if these people wanna turn around and sue the village because of that, they can sue the village and we're gonna be in a shit, and I hope it doesn't happen. Because every one of these people, and I don't blame them, I don't blame them, there were, there's a couple of them right next door, there's, there's a couple right here that damn near burnt to death. And, and something has to be done, so at least do what you can, go in there, even if they, don't, just tell the guy that's right here, we're gonna, we're gonna go in there, I don't care, we'll put it on your taxes, whatever, at least clean the outside of it, try to make the building halfway safe. If a kid goes in there and, and there, and there's all kinds of crap in there, you can open that gate, I can go right now and open that gate, I'll bring you over there if you want. And you, you can open that gate.
That would be basically against the law, Bob, you've arrested the trespass.
Yes, because that's trespassing, and I wouldn't do it, but I'm, what I'm saying is, trespassing you're not. If a kid does it, or somebody does it, or a drunk does it or something, the village is still gonna be in a doo-doo. I don't care how you do, how you look at it, am I right or wrong?
Essentially, you're wrong, but that was out of.
Well, how, how would I be wrong?
Because, because, because the owner of the property is responsible to maintain his property, he's responsible to.
But the owner's not here, so he, he can't maintain it.
He's taken some steps to, to at least try to secure the property and take some action on it.
But it's not secure, there's no locks on that. There's no locks.
I, I don't know, Bob, I'm just saying, he is the one that's ultimately responsible for his property. Again, it sounds like we're taking some reasonable steps to rectify the situation, and we'll continue to take steps to try to rectify the situation, it sounds like it's an awful situation, we don't want it to continue, and we'll do what we can do to rectify it as soon as we can.
And I realize that, it's, it's all I'm asking is, is to see if you can, go in there and at least clean his stuff up, all this.
We can't go in there, Bob, right now, because that's trespassing, and that's against the law, okay? And if you go in there and you trespass, that's against the law.
I'm not gonna go in there, I'm not gonna go in there. But you can, that's your life, if somebody throws a cigarette or something, and something else starts burns in there, the village of Ross's Point's gonna be sued so goddamn bad, they won't have enough taxes to pay. Yeah, and it's not right.
Okay.
Yeah.
I understand.
Right from the beginning, something wasn't done correctly.
I don't know.
Right from the beginning, wasn't done correctly.
We need to look at it.
Yeah. And I mean, I'm just telling you the facts. The facts are the facts, you know that, and I know that.
I understand.
Yeah, now, you're a hell of a good lawyer, I'll tell you that, because when I worked, you worked with me, things worked out perfect, and, and I gotta congratulate you on that.
Thank you, we'll do our best, what we can do.
And I enjoy working with you, I mean, it's not, I'm not here to argue with you or whatnot, I like you, you've always done a good job.
No, it sounds like an awful situation, we need it to get resolved.
It is, you know, but I mean, I'm just trying to figure out some way that will appease, I'm across the street, so it's not bothering me, the only thing that bothers me is if, if we get a, a wind that's coming from that direction, which is three quarters of the time, all the leaves already come over me, I have more leaves than anybody else in town. Mark can tell you that, Casey, I'm picking up by a truckload, you know? In order to stop somebody from throwing a cigarette out and, and burning my house down, you know?
I understand.
But, but it just, something has to be done, I mean, we gotta, you know, we gotta get on them, you gotta, you gotta do a little pushing there. And, and to me, the pushing, at least I would like to see is, at least the outside part of it cleaned up and all. So, you know what I'm saying? There, there's not that much to it, to do that, but it's enough, it's junk out there, it's laying out there, it's stuff that, if, if a kid does go in, even though, even a young kid, or a drunk or something goes in there and they get hurt, there's nothing stopping them from suing the village, even though they're wrong. There's nothing stopping them suing the village, now the village is gonna be right in the doo-doo again because they're gonna have to hire you, they're gonna have to hire all kinds of lawyers, it's gonna cost the taxpayers more money. That's what I don't wanna see, you know, I don't think it's fair to the taxpayer.
I, I think we can all agree, nobody wants to see that, Bob.
No, they don't, and I don't, I'm only trying to be fair to, I'm not, I'm not worried about myself, I'm worried about everybody, the taxpayer, there's a lot of people in this town that don't have a hell of a lot of money, you know what I mean, and they don't need less money, you know? So don't hurt them, you know?
I agree.
So we do. Thank you for all your comments.
Thank you.
Yes, as soon as we can to resolve the issue.
Given the comments, I'd really agree with it.
I just want to say thank you for listening to all of us, we appreciate that, very much.
Yeah, it's, it's a frustrating situation for all of us to see that building there, because I don't wanna see buildings like that there, but things take time.
I mean, I, I've lived here my whole life, and I love the village, and it makes me really sad to know that my property value is low because of that, Calvin's property value is low because of that, and it's frustrating when we've, I know I complained, not about the fire, nothing to do with the fire, but the abandoned vehicles and everything else, I've been complaining since June of last year.
There's a lady right there.
There's a file full of complaints about the property that we got, apparently.
My neighbors.
We will try not to let this one go, we will.
Thank you, I, I really do appreciate it, thank you.
We will keep after this and make sure it's cleaned up.
Thank you, very much.
Thank you, there's something I wanna say, you're telling me a problem, how are you gonna sell it?
I don't wanna get involved.
And any public, just comments about anything else?
No, that's enough for tonight.
Okay. Uh, minutes of the previous meeting, any questions about the minutes of the previous meeting?
Make a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, Tranche O'Leterno, are there any additions or deletions to the bills?
We have one deletion tonight, it's the Champlain Valley Electric, the amount of two oh five twelve, that was the one, or bulbs that came in, so we can do that.
Any questions from the board?
Make a motion to accept the bills as amended?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any correspondence today?
Yes, we have a letter from the Montgomery Hose Hook and Ladder Company. Dear Mayor and Trustees, please be advised that our annual election of officers held on April sixth, twenty twenty-one, the following members were elected by our membership to serve as chiefs until April twenty twenty-two. We submit their names for your approval. These have also been added to that update for the mayoral appointments, which will come up, but who they elected was, um, Mike LeBlancas Chief, Maurice Snide, First Assistant Chief, and Sean LaBombard, Second Assistant Chief. Thank you for your consideration of these elected officers.
Do we need a motion to accept that?
No, it's on, it's on the update for mayoral appointments, you'll get to it soon.
Yeah, so where that comes in is the additions to the mayoral appointments, because we didn't have the, uh, Fire Advisory Board and EMS Advisory appointed, because we didn't know what the turnout of the election was gonna be, who was gonna win, so I appoint those people that are, that have won their elections in the Fire Department to fill those positions on the boards.
And also, on your mayoral appointments, if you all have it, is also their EMS and Fire Advisory Board delegates, so if you could do that as a slate?
Yeah, I appoint them all as a slate.
Do you need a motion on that?
Yeah, are you making a motion?
I made a motion that we accept the people that's on the slate for the Fire Advisory Board and delegates and alternates.
Second up?
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any other correspondence today?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay. Uh, so, we already did the addition to the mayoral appointments. Story walk, the library and rec center got a grant for children books on pedestal and hopscotch games on the village walkway at the rec center. It's all grant funded, there's no matching contribution that we've got to do. Uh, does this take any motion to accept, Susan?
No, because there's not a, an in-kind funding, it's informational.
Okay. How much is the grant worth?
I believe it's four thousand and something, and, um, Ethan is going to sync the poles and put them around the walkway out there.
Uh, Complete Streets, someone, someone from Complete Streets will be coming by sometime to see what, sometime in May to see what we need for signs, they already know that most of downtown is a state street, so they're, they're prepared to handle all the permitting for state, really, for whatever signs that we need. And, uh, I'll have more news when that happens, but we just know sometime in May. Uh, there was a meeting last week on recreation marijuana legalization. Um, all prior local laws and rules and laws on the matter are superseded by the state, but I don't think we got any laws in the particular matter, we left it to the state anyway. And the only thing we could do, if we chose to do so, was say that there wouldn't be a dispensary allowed in the, in the village, but then we'd lose possible sales tax revenues if we did that, because we get, depending on how we, if we, whatever arrangement we have with the town, four, yeah, we get four percent that's split between us and the town. So if, it could be fifty-fifty, we have the arrangement for them, otherwise it's like, we get one percent, they get three. So we'd have to make an arrangement for the town on that. But those dispensaries would still be, they, they're still restricted by zoning laws, so that way dispensary cannot show up in someone's residential neighborhood, it'd have to be commercial properties, which is nice.
Quite frankly, at this point in time, in the village, marijuana dispensary's probably not a listed or permitted use anywhere, so they probably need a use area, no matter where they want to go.
Yeah.
At this time. The, the way that, uh, the way they talked about it though, is if you didn't make an action, it goes into default. Like, say if you didn't want a dispenser, you have to say you don't want a dispenser, but if you don't do, if you don't make it a local law type thing, then it goes into default where they can come into a commercial rent, or a commercial, uh, building and open a shop.
With the way that the New York State is doing, we have to actively, by permissive referendum, have public referendum ban it in the village.
Right. Okay. If not, it would be allowed after a certain term, or a certain timeline, apparently, that's what I got out of it. Okay, yes, and, and, and I guess so, okay.
I've got the, uh.
There's a webinar.
Yeah, there's a webinar and a pitch report, I can send that to you.
Okay, how big is that?
It was interesting, the webinar. And, uh, no matter what, though, with the state law, it's, if someone wanted to have a marijuana greenhouse in the village or town that banned it, we have no say whatsoever, other than zoning laws over whether someone has a greenhouse or not, to grow it commercially. Also, in like two or three years, they're introducing laws about people growing it in their own homes for personal use, we also would not be able to have rules against that.
It's restricted, you can only have like three adult plants.
Yeah, it was like three plants and three.
Three adults, it'd be minimal, but as far as a greenhouse, are, are they saying, because that falls under agri markets or something?
I'm not sure.
I didn't catch the greenhouse part of it, but, uh.
Yeah, they just said that we couldn't, if someone wanted to grow it on a commercial scale, in a warehouse or something, we have no say.
Really?
Yeah.
Doesn't make sense to me.
It was interesting.
Dispensary part, maybe I could understand at some point, you're restricted, but, but, because if you do that kind of operation, as, and as we've had prior discussions about concern about electric use and things of that nature, you put one of those facilities in a, in a warehouse building, that's, that's gonna generate, that's gonna require some electricity.
Some electricity and water and everything.
Water, electricity.
But New York State, yeah, New York State is taking all that out of the village's hands, and they're dealing it with the state level only, which is kind of annoying.
But they're looking for areas to go, I mean, they're looking, they're seeking places like Chief Utilities to, to, to put these infachions places in. Right.
We could use a water customer and sewer customer, they'd certainly be using a lot of water and sewer. I have the joy of inspecting those places in Vermont. Okay. Jason wants to go to the, uh, NIPA meeting in May as a delegate, if nobody else is interested in going?
Make a motion to let him go?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, I may or may not be able to attend, but even if I'm able to attend, I want him with me anyway. I don't know what my schedule is at that, at that time in May. Uh, Village Wide Garage Sale, it's on private property, but in the past, we've provided maps plus a list of what was being sold at each house, I would like to continue that practice. I'm not sure if that takes a motion or not. Susan, who does the map?
Well, um.
Billy's clerk?
Yeah, we do a map, they give us information, we put on a map, and we put a little blurb of what they're selling. The good thing is, if we do that this year, we didn't do it last year because of COVID and we didn't wanna be involved, even though it's on private property, if we do the map, we could at least put on there, you know, COVID isn't over, remember to wear a mask, you know, gives us a chance to get that information out while supporting the village.
Are you looking at the weekend of the twentieth, the week before the, uh, Fourth of July celebration?
Yeah, official Fourth of July.
Yeah, because the Fourth of July celebration is gonna be on the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, it's gonna be Saturday and Sunday.
For the weekend.
For the weekend, but usually we do the village yard, uh, yard sale the week before, is that what you're looking at?
Um, really, aren't they done on the Saturday of?
No, because they did away with that because it interferes with the fire department, because they do a boot drive and there's different things going on. So, they're trying to get people to come to our community two weekends in a row this way.
Okay.
So, it's better for our businesses and.
So, the Saturday before then, would be your date, okay?
It would be the twentieth of June.
Okay. Because people have been calling and wanting to know about that, so, yeah, if you do a motion on it, then that, you know, then I can advertise it a little and let people know we're listed.
I'll put it in the form of a motion that we advertise and sponsor the village yard, village-wide yard sale.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh, Trusty Arno?
Uh, I went to the library board meeting the other, last week, and we had a few, few things that they'd like to have done over there. First of all, they want a couple of signs where it says "library" on the corner of White Avenue. And I went seeing Johnny and he's looking up to see if he can have some signs made up and stuff like that, where to turn for the library and stuff like that. Because they don't wanna use Lake Street driveway in, so they wanna tell them to.
Benny, that's one of the things that the Complete Streets is gonna look at, they might do that for us for free.
Okay, well, the signs, I don't think they're very expensive, two, probably twenty bucks, maybe something like that, so. But, and also she'd like to have the, if possible, a railing put on the cellar. Where you film down the cellar stairs from outside, she'd like to have a railing put on the side of the stairway, because there's no railing there. And not only that, it's most likely a law, so.
Probably a building code requirement, one way to go, I guess.
Yeah, it's ADA compliant, insurance, insurance, I'm surprised the insurance company hasn't complained, they never sent an inspector.
No.
Yeah, they haven't, they've seen one every year, they never got it.
They could never get in the doorway, that's why.
Because that door is closed, there's an inside door and outside door, you don't see the stairs when you're walking around the cellar and you bring them back up through the stairs in the middle of the building, they don't see it, so, they never really caught it.
That's kind of, that's not a very good inspector, because that doesn't stop me when I inspect and stuff in Vermont.
Well, anyhow, so, and they'd like to have them doors, there's two doors down there that they were trying to sell, and she'd like to get them out of the cellar, because she's cleaning the cellar, if we could have the street department or somebody or electric department pick them out and bring them up to the sewer plant or the store room or the blue building or someplace.
Yeah, those are not standard-sized doors, are they?
No.
It's gonna be hard to find anyone that wants them.
They're an every-duty door, that's for sure. And also, at the gazebo, I've been down there partering around and stuff, and I had the electric department, I asked the electric department if they would take and pull some of them weeds out of there and the brush and stuff like that and everything. And also, I'd like to take and have them ivridies pulled out, because they're all dead in the back, and we plant some new flowers around there this fall and stuff, some perennial flowers and stuff. And looking at that, and the roof needs fixing on that gazebo, and it also needs painting. We should maintain our property, you know, like everybody else does, it's in dire need. And also, I'd like to have the benches painted that people sit on in the village. There's quite a few of them down on the state dock that need painting and some here and there around the village that, they're all compost, or not compost, composite boarding and stuff like that, and all the stain and stuff is gone off of them. And if we don't take care of them, we're gonna lose them, we're gonna have to take and buy some new ones or whatever, because they're pretty bad shape. And also, I'd like to see the rail, the railroad rail over to the fire station painted, that's in dire need. That's all I have for right now.
That guardrail that's outside?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I'd like to have an executive session, talk about a particular person.
I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, Trusty Menard?
I have nothing for this evening.
Okay. Trusty Pelkey?
Yes, I was gonna bring up about the village-wide yard sale, but there you did. The Fourth of, uh, the Fourth of July Committee, we met, I was talking to them yesterday, a couple of the members, and they are gonna have just Saturday and Sunday, they're going away with the Friday, because they're gonna try to do everything in two days. So, they're trying to sell tickets, there's tickets out there that you can buy, that they're trying to pay for like the bands and the stuff that they're gonna have Saturday night. Um, so the girls are working hard and getting that venue up for us, and it brings a lot of people to our community and it helps our businesses, so, that's a great thing. Another thing I noticed is, I wanted to talk to Joe about this before the meeting, but I guess I'll just bring it up. Last, two weeks ago, when the kids were out of school, there's a lot of children down at the playground equipment playing with a lot of older of belts. And there's no benches around there, there's one old bench, and it was supposed to be taken out and replaced. Um, back years ago, we poured five pads for benches to go around, there's three on the south side and two on the north side. And I don't know if we can get, if we can get the company to donate some more of those benches, because it was Eastern Auto-Randac Healthcare Network. Uh, Jan Luterno was in charge of that. I tried to call her today, but she's in Florida, I guess, or she's on vacation, so she should be back anytime, but I didn't know if we, if we had any contact information or if we contacted them, see if we can get like benches donated to us and we can put them out there.
Yeah.
Because a lot of the elderly people, you know, they're looking for a place to sit, especially with their grandchildren and, you know, and.
Yep.
There's a lot of people use that playground.
Oh, yeah.
It's a nice facility and I think we need to just finish what we started, so we can pull that, that'd be nice, I mean, we can check into that.
Yeah.
Uh, other than that, I've been, I had a meeting with the wastewater and the water superintendent. He tells me everything is going good, I mean, he's getting some numbers for a couple of little projects that he's doing, he's gonna get back to us and we'll report back to the board and give updates on what's going on with the water system, but everything seems to be working very well. I went over those plans that we talked about, the thirty percent design of the meeting agenda. And I just, on the back of the sheet, I noticed that, well, I looked at the attendance records and I see who attended, but I was wondering on these questions, you're finalized, like the construction of the building, finalized the heat source of the heating, finalized the generator, is that something that was done, or is it something that we're gonna do?
It's something that we're gonna do.
Okay.
It was discussed, they had this thing, like, they wanted to put showers in this big office in there, but it's like, why? Because it's an automated facility, so why do we have showers in the big office when we already got that at the sewer plant? But the building, that's like, like if it's gonna be wood or steel, nothing's been, nothing's been decided on that. We still have to wait to actually close on the property, before we can fucking redesign any of it.
They're designing the project, I mean, this is like a seven-point-three-million-dollar project, I just wanna make sure that, you know, we're getting the best bang for our buck, and if there's, there's things like you're saying with the showers, if they don't need a whole shower facility in there, why spend the money and put it in there? I mean, we wanna, we wanna keep our water rates where they are and try not to increase them. That's why I was just looking at the different things with how they said finalizing, and I know myself and Trusty Arno was talking today that it'd be nice if, if, like our mechanic could attend these meetings, because he has a lot of insight on what's going on. I mean, we rebuilt, when I was the superintendent of the village, we rebuilt the industrial water system down there and that's working perfect. And there was a lot of changes that were done that the engineers didn't think about it at the time, because when you're putting these things together, it was a good idea at the time, it looks good on paper, but when it came time to actually do it, we did a lot of modifications, and these modifications could have been done and saved a lot of money in the long run. Because, you know, and I was just wondering if like one of the commissioners or the co-commissioner could go to the, go to the meetings on site.
Yeah, I'd like to see the.
Like, for everybody, including people in the village, if they wanted to come.
No, what I'd like to see is, if we have any more meetings with the water plant, I'd like to have.
At least one person on the board.
One person from the water commissioners or whatever, or the assistant commissioner, to go to them meetings.
Yeah, there will be, there will be, that's what I'm saying, there will be.
I hope so, well, I just made a motion that we're gonna, one person should go.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I just, it just, I think it makes a lot of sense, I mean, if they're the ones dealing with it hands-on, they should be involved at least, because they can pick up things that, you know.
Well, the thing about it, is what my concern is, don't wait till the plans are a hundred percent done, then when you bring them to the board, or we go through them and we go through with the mechanic, and then fifty percent of the plans get changed, it's kind of a waste of money.
Yeah.
So, let's, let's talk about this as we go in steps, because I like the way that you're doing the progress sets in percentages, which is a good idea. It's good to have everybody's thought at the time, I mean.
Yeah, no, it makes, it makes sense.
I, I think it's, it's a good move.
And so far, before we can even start to cement anything as a design, we actually have to have the property signed.
Right, well, that's pretty much in the works, we're right, we're what, ninety percent done of that process?
Yeah, we'll ask for discussion about that this evening.
Okay. So, that's all I have for tonight, which is probably enough.
Anything on the electric boilers?
That's, well, I have, I have that, that local law to extend that moratorium done. I was tweaking some of it this afternoon, because I wanted to kind of bring it with me, but I didn't get it totally completed. I should be able to send it up to Susan to circulate to all of you, hopefully by tomorrow.
Now, would that be done in a resolution, or can we just do it as a motion?
Should be local law.
Oh, it's gotta be a local law?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. And that's just to protect the interests of the village, electric rate payers, so that's what we're looking at.
And as a side note, I did follow up with, I, the gentleman at New York State that I spoke to at NICA, I can't think of his name now, but, he was, the last time I think I was here, I mentioned I'd follow up with him, which I did, and he recalled our prior conversation and said, okay, I'm gonna, I'll look into some more, see if I can find something for you, and I didn't find anything else. So, we may, we may have to sit down, put together our own local law dealing with, with that particular, for that particular ordinance. But we need to get the moratorium extended first, and that should be, that should be up to you guys tomorrow.
Okay, will we have to have a special session to do that, or can that be done with the next regular session?
I think you still may have time, you guys on the regular session.
Okay. Just wanna make sure.
Open the, a public meeting, right, public hearing?
Correct.
Yeah, it's gotta be hearing.
Correct.
Even for the moratorium extension?
Yep.
Okay. Code enforcement, any reports?
You skipped.
So far earlier this evening.
Jerry Rodriguez.
I have nothing. I have nothing.
I'm sorry, I did skip your, you're supposed to be after Arno, I am sorry.
It's all good, I have nothing this evening.
Okay. You said you have nothing.
On our agenda is what we spoke about this evening, and we're doing the best we can with that, let's hope it's all aware of that. And I'll try to keep everybody posted, I'm gonna get the phone numbers of the neighbors, thanks, so if I do hear something, I'm gonna advise them right away.
Susan, is there anything else?
No, I have nothing else today, thank you.
Any more public comments? I'd like to apologize to Rodriguez, today I skipped him, last time I called him Gonzalez.
I make a motion, we go into.
We did, yeah, we're just like, if we gave a motion for executive session regarding purchase of property.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I make a motion, we go into recess?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.